Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, November 19th, and I'd like to welcome you to a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, and it's 9:00 AM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. And before we get started, many of you heard about Commissioner, former Commissioner Anderson. So I just want to take this moment of silence and maybe say a few words. And they're written down so as to stay on point and to keep my composure. So I just wrote that Andy leaves behind a legacy of service and dedication to Brevard County citizens. During his two terms as District Five Commissioner, Andy's impact in the south part of Brevard County can be felt throughout the construction of numerous roads and drainage projects, a surge in economic development, and the implementation of various improvements that enrich the quality of life for Brevard County residents. There are too many achievements of Andy's outstanding eight years as District Five Commissioner to list here today, but I'll be remiss if not mentioning a few things that highlight the type of man that Andy was. His determination to get the St. John's Heritage Parkway funded and constructed, the hundreds of coats he collected for needy kids through the Coats for Kids Drive, his commitment to veteran causes, his pledge to help restore the health of the Indian River Lagoon, the establishment of the Dog Beach at Canova, and the holiday gift drive named Els for Elders that we still continue today. His support of Boy Scouts of America, both personally and professionally. And there's hundreds of things I could probably list, but those are some of the things, I guess, that most of us would have been exposed to. So obviously, he's going to be missed by many, and it was really sad to hear and sort of very quiet in my house this weekend, but he leaves behind his wife Sabrina, his sons Christian, Hunter and Daniel, and his brother Dan. And during this moment of silence, just please keep him and his family in your thoughts. Mr. Pritchett? Can I get a motion for the minutes for approval for the August 6 regular meeting?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Loebert. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to the selection of a chair and vice chair for 2019-2020. Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Isnardi, I'd like to make a motion to move Commissioner Loebert as chair of the commission next year.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you all. I'm going to sit here, at least for the time being. Got my laptop all set up. I really do appreciate that. Before we get going with anything, there are a couple of things I want to take care of. So first off, and I'll try to hold this up so that we get a good view. The commission went ahead and secured this wonderful permanent gavel for our outbound chair. We did make sure it was properly secured so that if anyone came and was really aggravating, we wouldn't get the urge, but it's my pleasure to present that to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And then...
Thank you.
And then one of the things that we've had up here, kind of is, I don't want to say a trend, but is an occasional trend. You get hungry when you're up here for six, seven hours for some of the longer meetings. And I know that our outbound chair is a fan of these and is fond of them, so I managed to snag a bag for her as well.
Thank you so much.
So she should be in good shape for the time being.
I think he just wants me to stop taking them from him when he leaves them on the desk here.
That's part of it.
Commissioner Isnardi, I just want to say you've done a great job this year cheering. You're very professional, and you really moved us forward with all of our items, and I think you're a great chair.
Thank you.
And a wonderful person.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, so let's get rolling with the rest of the agenda here.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, I was going to say, with respect to that, the first thing I'm going to do as chair is, I don't like using gavel, so I'm going to pass this down to Commissioner Pritchett for the moment, because she's next in order for the moment. If you could hold that for me, or the real gavel. All right, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Pritchett as vice chair for the upcoming year.
And I'll...
All right, and then if you want to call the question.
Call the question.
Yes, ma'am, you got the gavel.
Okay, so you would have to...
Yes, ma'am. That's my motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Oh, see? For the habit.
Now, do I have to give the gavel back? Just kidding.
All right. So see, I told you you're going to mess me up if I stay here.
Give us a little time. It's kind of an adjustment up here. Okay, so congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
So moving on.
Congratulations.
We've got some resolutions that we're going to start up with. First one is a District Five resolution.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
May I have a moment before the resolutions?
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you. Due to repeated and gross abuse of resolution awards and presentation sections of the agenda by fellow commissioners and the undue burden placed on county staff and citizens' time, I've decided to vote no on all resolutions presented in this section, except for the resolutions recognized in fallen officers and members of the United States Air Force once a presenting commissioners reach 12 resolutions per calendar year. As District Five commissioners introduced 13 in 2019, and District Four commissioners had introduced 29, I am forced to vote no on three of the resolutions on this agenda. This is not a judgment on whether these particular resolutions are worthy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, moving on to E1. So D5.
Is Robert present? Oh, there he is. Can you come on up? You can just stand right at the podium, so you can talk and tell us a little bit about your organization.
And for the time being, I'm going to ask if you'd help me with the clock, since it's on your side. I'll manage this, if you can manage that for me.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
All right. Whereas Alpha One Antitrypsin Deficiency, Alpha One, is one of the most common and serious hereditary disorders in the world and can result in life-threatening lung disease in adults and liver disease in both children and adults. And whereas Alpha One has been identified in nearly all populations and ethnic groups, it is estimated about one in every 2,500 Americans have Alpha One, and up to 6% of Caucasians in the U.S. carry a single deficient gene and may pass that gene on to their children. And whereas Alpha One is widely underdiagnosed and misdiagnosed, and fewer than 10% of those predicted to have Alpha One have been diagnosed, and it often takes an average of five doctors in seven years from the time symptoms appear before proper diagnosis is made, which can be done using a simple blood test. And whereas it is important to increase awareness and detection of a serious hereditary and misdiagnosed disorder, and whereas during the month of November, a nationwide awareness campaign will take place throughout the country to educate the public, as well as the medical community, on Alpha One detection and treatment for those affected by this condition. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 as Alpha One Awareness Month to bring awareness, education, support to those who are affected by Alpha One in Brevard County and throughout the world, done order and adopted in regular session this 19th day of November AD 2019. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second from Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, passes 4-1. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Now, I want to, I'm not going to take too much time, but I wanted to thank the county and the commissioners, all the staff here, and everyone in attendance here for giving me this opportunity. Alpha One, as we call it for short, is a rare genetic disease, but it's turning out it's not so rare anymore, and it affects the livers and lungs of many people. It's one of the number-one causes for liver transplants in pediatric patients. It's, um, it causes about 20%, 15% rather, of COPD cases. My mother-in-law passed from having Alpha One and COPD not too long ago, and my wife of 25 years had a double lung transplant in 2017 as a result of this genetic condition. She's not here today, she's not feeling well, but I'm just very happy that the county has given me this opportunity to raise awareness. I want to encourage everyone, if you know somebody that you care about who has bouts of asthma or pneumonia and ephazema, COPD, or unknown liver disease, that they can't really pinpoint what's caused it, I encourage everybody to get tested for Alpha One. It's just a long name. Just ask your doctor for genetic testing for Alpha One. And there are treatments out there available and many more on the horizon, so hopefully this won't be such a bad thing in the future. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
All right. Commissioner Smith, you're next up. You're on E2.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before I start, I just want to point out my perspective on these resolutions. I know that at least one and several of my fellow commissioners don't think that these resolutions have much effect and are largely a waste of time, but I just want to point out from my perspective, I think these resolutions are an opportunity for the county commission to recognize outstanding people and outstanding organizations in our community. Our community is diverse. We have almost 600,000 people, and the few minutes that we take before each meeting, I think, is well worth it from my perspective, because we're recognizing people that are at the forefront of ideas and efforts to make this a better county. So as long as I can, and as long as I'm not overruled by my fellow commissioners, I fully intend to continue with recognizing the folks, as has been done in boards for countless, countless years. So having said that, I'll get off my soapbox. Martha Duffy, would you come to the podium, please? I'll read this, and then you'll have an opportunity to speak. And thank you for being here. Whereas prostate cancer is both the second most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of cancer deaths in American men. And whereas, according to the American Cancer Society, one in nine men are diagnosed with prostate cancer, and one in 41 will die from the disease every year. And whereas, during No Shave November, we remember those lost to prostate cancer, offer our support to patients and families, highlight early awareness, and encourage men to donate shaving and grooming money to prostate cancer research and education. And whereas, Martha Duffy, a widow of prostate cancer victim David Duffy, has organized and championed for early prostate cancer detection with free protein-specific antigen blood screening events in Brevard County and free testing conducted by Suncoast Pathology Associates. And whereas Martha Duffy exemplifies the goals of National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month and No Shave November with her commitment to awareness and early detection. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim November 2019 as No Shave November, and commend Martha Duffy for her efforts to organize free prostate cancer screening events, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 19th day of November 2019 AD. Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve this resolution.
My second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes 4-1. You have the chairman, you have the chair, you have the floor. It is one of those mornings.
Thank you so much, Commissioners, Commissioner Smith, for this honor. I'm truly humbled. My husband would be here today if we had awareness, more awareness for prostate cancer blood screening, PSA testing. A man dies every 17 minutes in the United States. When Dave was diagnosed in 2016, it was every 20 minutes. So we are increasing the death rate annually, and I believe that if we could have PSA screening standard medicine with a man's annual physical, it's three little letters added to that list of blood work, PSA, we could save a known amount of men. So I'm going to work as hard as I can. My goal is to make that standard with every man's annual blood work. And a second goal is to start a foundation in my husband's name. I work with, not for, the Prostate Cancer Foundation, and they do an amazing job in research, but so many men are suffering, and it's a fallacy that it's an old man's disease. It is not. It can strike, there are men in their 30s and 40s dying every day. So they have families, and if I start a foundation, I couldn't give huge amounts, but maybe annually I could give a family, like at this time of the year, $1,000 or $2,000 to get through the holidays and have Christmas for their... I need to work on it, but it's an idea, and I plan to do it. And thank you very much for this honor. I'm humbled.
All right, E3. Commissioner Smith. Tom and Lori? And Crew?
Heard. Yes.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Whereas Florida farmers and ranchers help feed the world by producing a bounty of nutritious foods. And whereas, farmers rely on essential partnerships with urban and suburban communities, working together to supply, sell, and deliver finished products to consumers across Florida and around the globe, building our nation's rich agricultural resources and contributing both to the health and well-being of our country and the strength of our economy. And whereas, during National Farm City Week, we recognize the importance of this cooperative network contributing to $127 billion annually to Florida's economic impact, and employment of more than 2 million workers, including farmers, ranchers, shippers, processors, marketers, retailers, and inspectors. And whereas, consumers purchasing Florida's agricultural products help farmers and ranchers maintain their superior natural resource conservation practices to preserve freshwater recharge areas, wildlife habitat, and green space. And whereas, Farm City Week activities celebrate the mutually beneficial relationships, which we count among our many blessings, as we gather with family and friends around the Thanksgiving table. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim November 20 through 27, 2019, as Farm City Week, and upon, and call upon all citizens to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of all those working together to produce and supply our community, our nation, and the world with an abundance of agricultural products, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 19th day of November 2019. Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve this resolution. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes 4-1. Anything else would like to say?
First of all, I want to thank you guys for giving us these few minutes of recognition. From the numbers you just read, Commissioner, $127 billion, that's a huge economic engine for the state of Florida. Part of the problem with agriculture is that there's so many issues that affect us that come before all the commissioners here. And by having this Farm City Week proclamation every year, you know, we're so busy on our farms and ranches working that we don't get out into the community, but there's so many issues that affect us every day that come before this commission and before the state. And this gives us a way to put a face to the economic engine of agriculture. So thank you guys for doing this, and we look forward to working with you.
And I can say that I can, I thank all of you for the efforts that you make on behalf of farming and ranching, because many people in the community, without you coming before us and giving you a chance to have some publicity, an awful lot of people in the community think that tomatoes and oranges and all the produce and agricultural products, they come from publics. We don't need you. So it's good that we make people realize that there's effort between our farmers and ranchers and the public. And that tomato and that orange and that head of lettuce doesn't come to market unless it's because of you guys.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you, sir. All right, moving on to E4. Before I address this, we have a public comment card, and I want to say a couple of things beforehand. I do see some folks in the audience that are clearly here for Rocky. I see staff from Cape Canaveral, I see elected officials, Mayor Pro Tem Mike Brown from Cape Canaveral. I'm sure I'm going to be missing someone. I know it's tough with a 9:00 AM meeting to have everyone that otherwise would be here, but there is one individual at least that's come out from Orlando who's put in a public comment card. Hugh Harling, if you want to come up? And Hugh is the executive director of the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. I have the pleasure of working with him on an ongoing basis on that board.
Getting the knees working at 9:00 in the morning, it's tough too when you get older.
Yes, sir.
My name is Hugh Harling, and I really appreciate the recognition that you're giving Rocky this morning. I've worked with him for six years. He is an outstanding individual, and one of the things that I believe is that if we keep having birthdays, Rocky, and you keep serving the citizens, you become a senior statesman, and in my opinion, Rocky is one of the finest senior statesmen that I've ever worked with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, and you'll notice there's some adjectives in here. I'm not normally big on adjectives as an attorney, but I think they're warranted in this set of circumstances. Whereas Rocky Randall served on the Cape Canaveral City Council with great distinction for over 30 years, and whereas Rocky's service included a remarkable 18 years as mayor of that fine city, and whereas Rocky's selfless commitment to public service extended well beyond his council duties, as he has been an active and dynamic member of numerous advisory boards and committees that have had a positive impact throughout Brevard County and the state of Florida, and whereas Rocky's dedication to serving Brevard County residents is also exemplified by his many years as a local postmaster, and whereas Rocky's humbleness, enthusiasm, and esprit de corps have been universally recognized hallmarks of his pleasant demeanor and amiable temperament, regardless of the activity in which he has been engaged. And whereas, for over three decades, county employees, commissioners, and their respective staffs have come to admire and respect Rocky and have been enriched by their association with this exemplary gentleman, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Broad County, Florida, does hereby recognize and express great appreciation for the many years of selfless service Rocky Randall has rendered to our community and to wish him well in his future pursuits. Can I have a motion, please?
I'd make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Pritchett, a second from Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously, Rocky. Congratulations. Come on up. Want to hear something? Speech, speech.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you know, sometimes we are looked upon as leaders, and not always are we that. But the real truth goes to the people that stand behind us. That's the staff. They are what makes it happen every day. We may take the credit, make the speeches, and open the doors and things like that, but the staff that, every day functions, and I can only speak about Little Cape Canaveral because that's what I'm familiar with. Our city managers through the years have back-trained everybody to do more than one position. We're always short on staff, everybody is. But just because some businessperson comes in during the day and says, "I want to get a business permit for this," we can't or we don't say, "Oh, gosh, that person's off today. Could you come back tomorrow?" We have back-trained everybody to have at least one job. And probably in the audience, and I don't know if he's here, is Todd Morley. Todd is a state-certified building official. He's our interim city manager, well-qualified, picked up the ball and is running with it. I'm turning my duties over to Mike Brown, the person you mentioned, right behind me with his lovely wife. He'll keep the tradition going, and I thank you for the time and the honor, and I don't wish to take more than my allotted one minute or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky. And Todd, if you want to come up for the photo as well, I'd be glad to have you. I've had the pleasure working with Todd as well. Anyone truly that's come up for Rocky, you're welcome to be in the photo. I'd prefer you be there.
I just want to thank you. I mean, I have sat with you through many meetings over the years, even when I was on Palm Bay City Council many T P. And I just appreciate your commitment. I mean, no one can ever question how much time and effort you put into everything that you do and everything that you address, and I love your quick wit. Most people, if they don't know Rocky, he is the funniest guy on the globe, and I just...
I'm old, but I don't know about the funny part, but...
I think the very first day I met you, I think I told you you reminded me of Ross Perot, remember? And you thought that was pretty funny, but I appreciate you, and thank you so much for your service all these years, and we're better for it, so thank you, sir.
I'm humbled and honored.
And you are a statesman.
Thank you.
Rocky, I would like to say that it's been my honor to work with you for the last five years. I can't, I don't know how many boards we've sat on together, but you're always quick-witted, as Commissioner Isnardi mentioned, and you've always got insightful things to say. You're a very caring person, and I really regret the fact that you're retiring, because now I'm probably the oldest person in the county that's in elected position.
Wow.
So congratulations on this recognition.
Thank you, Commissioner. And if there are, I'd like to have a moment, have our Mayor Pro Tem Mike Brown come with me, because he is...
Absolutely.
He's easily replacing me.
Yeah, let's do that, please.
Come on, Mike.
I would be honored.
All right.
Well, looks like I'm the turkey between all these people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This is...
And if you will forgive me, I'm on my way to the aquatic meeting, so I would like to work on that. So, forgive me for easing out, but their meeting started at 8:00, so I-
When you're over there, say hi to Rocket from my office. I think she's over there right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on to F, the consent agenda. We don't have any cards for that. Would anyone like something polled? Commissioner Pritchett?
F7.
All right, F7. Okay, with the exception of F7, can I get a motion to pass the remainder of consent?
So moved.
All right, I will give that to you, Commissioner Isnardi, in a second.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Smith for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passed, so we passed F with the exception of F7. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir. I love Mr. Randall, and I would love to see him sit on that. My only request is that we would send these out as individual letters instead of a commission letter. I think we would be, it's just something we haven't done before. And I think as far as recommendations, I think it would be better if we individually send these out.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. You know, if that's your preference, I'll not make this a motion. So, we'll just go ahead and take no action with respect to that.
Commissioner, don't-
Commissioner Tabia? No, I don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm comfortable with former Mayor Randall's on this. My question would be, when we do this, are we putting the 18-point font that says, "This comes from an individual office"? I don't want this to be, you know, outside of sunshine. It would be difficult to put this all together. So-
Right.
If you wanted to do a letter on this and have multiple signatures, I think we could authorize that. You certainly would have my support on this one if you didn't, whether you put down the board in total or, my question is, do you want three different letters? Are you just copying this? Because again, Mr. Randall dutifully served the citizens in your district, is a strong Republican, and someone I feel comfortable for nominating up there. So, what?
I gather from Commissioner Pritchett's motion that it may be best for us just to do them individually. And that's certainly going to be the cleanest as far as sunshine's concerned. So, that's kind of my inclination at this point in time, if that's acceptable.
Your call.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
And thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right, moving on to public comment. We do have one card. Charles Tovey from Melbourne.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. First, I wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And people ask me what I'm running for, what office, and I'm running for my life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, as well as justice for all. A dog can fetch, a dog can sit, a dog can stay. Trained my pole cat, or they're not mine, and I don't have them, but my pole cats used to come up every morning at 4:30. They were trained to eat at that time. And my rac, the raccoons are trained to be out of my house because it's open. And anyways, they're trained to stay out of my house. But we can't train people to be responsible. And this is where I think that a lot of our problems in our society, as well as our environment, stems from, is the lack of education and family quality time and the foundation traditions that we've passed through our generations. And we lost that in the new America. I also have on my card, the living shorelines. Apparently, the people that are, the contractors are either ignorant or they don't care, and they just go up and destroy everything. And I'm having my living shorelines being destroyed. It takes years to get them to the point that they are. And then within a matter of minutes, they spray the Roundup on the mangroves and on my Carpa brotus edulous, which is hot and taut fig, and the purple morning glories that are grown there, as well as the mangroves and some other specimens of plants. Also, I'd like to mention about the Roundup use, and maybe we could phase out Roundup and the use of that. And there's alternative in seawater. Saltwater and vinegar is a good weed killer, and it's bio, it's safe for the environment. And the Brazilian pepper trees that we're trying to eradicate, and will never eradicate as long as they're being cut and then put at the dump. And then we take the cuttings and we trim them up into mulch. And then the seeds are not sterilized. Unless you sterilize the seeds, they'll come up and grow more. So, we're actually causing more growth by removing these things. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, has anybody inspected the treatment plant in Palm Shores? It looked pretty old and dilapidated, and I wasn't sure. And I have to go and wish everybody safe holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'm happy to check on that with respect to Palm Shores and get back to you. I know we have your contact info at the office, so I can get you some more info with respect to that, even though it's outside of my district. Don't see any more public comment cards. So, with that, we'll move on to H1. And before we get started with that, my goal, or one of my goals this year is to try to move the meetings as efficiently as we can. Obviously, if there's something that's quasi-judicial, we have to have a certain amount read into the record so that everyone's on notices to what we're doing. But when it comes to those other items that aren't quasi-judicial, if someone on council feels it appropriate to make a motion at any point in time, even before it's introduced, as long as we have everyone on board with what we're voting on, I don't have any qualms with us moving forward if there are no public comment cards and no one has a concern, because it seems like a way for us to get through things a little bit faster. So, with that said, I'll call H1. And at any point if someone wants to move to take action on it, I'm happy to entertain that.
I make a motion to approve H1.
All right, we have a motion. And a second from Commissioner Tabia. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So, moving on to I1. We don't have any cards on I1. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know that we had some pretty harsh words for the city of Palm Bay, and I think Palm Bay greatly came on board. But I did want to take a second here and recognize not only the city council, but some individual members very briefly. I had a 30-minute meeting with the mayor who listened, and I greatly appreciated that. Whether he agreed or not, I have no idea. But providing time certainly was very helpful. And I want to also express a particular appreciation for Councilman Kenny Johnson. He was willing to set aside his political differences and work together in the best interests of our respective constituents. I believe he is a man of principle, is working diligently on behalf of the citizens of Palm Bay, which is far more important than politics, and I thank him for that effort. Thank you, Madam Chair. Or, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
I have been called worse, so I'll let that one slide.
Sorry.
No, no worries. All right, do we have a motion with respect to I1?
So moved.
All right. Commissioner Smith with a motion, and Commissioner Isnardi for the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. No, no worries. All right, we do have a card on I2. Let's, we can have staff introduce it and then go for the card. Let's do it that way if we could.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, what you have with item I2 is the implementation of a work group for innovative solar energy resources. We got some direction last year on this particular resolution to bring back some options for implementation. So, we kind of have a low-end implementation, medium, and a high-end, and there's cost differences there based on staff time. So, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. So, we have two cards on this. The first one is Leslie Maloney from Melbourne Beach.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll just be brief. Leslie Maloney, Melbourne Beach. I'm representing Turtle Coast Sierra Club this morning, and we have over 2,000 members in Brevard and Indian River County. So, I just want to thank Commissioner Tabia for leading the way on this resolution. It's been a while getting it out here and moving it forward, but we're finally here with this morning. We hope that the rest of you Commissioners will support it. As you know, this is very timely as far as clean energy is just exploding across the country. And the price has fallen by 80%, especially with solar. So, this is very, very timely, what you're doing here this morning. We would add and ask, as far as the stakeholder list, and we appreciate being included on that list, we would ask that you add the Citizens Climate Lobby Group in town, and also IFIS from the University of Florida to the stakeholder organizations. They could contribute a lot as well to this task force, this working group. Much is happening in Brevard on the topic of sustainability, as you probably are aware. There is a Brevard Sustainability Working Group that meets each month. We're hoping that the Wiser Board can be a part of that. It is made up of cities, nonprofits. Brevard Schools sits on it. Kennedy Space Center representatives sit on it, FIT, so on and so forth. So, it's got a lot of great organizations, groups there. And we share ideas and resources and what's happening with clean energy, solar, that whole world of sustainability, whatever word you want to use there. I know sustainability is not a favorite word for some of us. That group, just to let you know, just put on a solar workshop. I believe you all were invited to that. I know you have busy schedules. But they just put on a solar workshop about 10 days ago at the Florida Solar Energy Center. So, there's, you know, a lot of information being put out there. So, this is a strong step forward for clean energy in Brevard. It will save taxpayer dollars and also improve quality of life. So, the Sierra Club looks forward to participating with you, working with you in this effort, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, next on the comment list is Lisa Ruckman from Merritt Island.
Hi, I'm Lisa Ruckman from Merritt Island. First, I just want to thank everyone for considering this. To me, this is a big budget issue, as well as a hurricane issue. We obviously can save a lot of tax dollars. If we can move facilities incrementally, it'd be more and more, you know, efficient in heating and cooling and whatnot, as well as using renewables like solar. As Leslie mentioned, solar has come down a lot in price. I'm hearing that is now the cheapest option for electricity in Florida. Also, I've noticed that a lot of cities all over the nation, you know, in small towns, big towns, have really been moving towards this. So, it'll be a little bit easier for us at this point because we've got so much data. And people have already gone out and tried and experimented with things, so it'll be even easier for us at this point to do this. One of the things that I found interesting was, one of the big benefits of doing solar electricity in Florida is helping us to be prepared after hurricanes. I know that I went to the solar thing that Leslie mentioned on the previous Friday, and the city of Orlando is, they've been doing some electric fleet vehicles. And they've got this new, I don't know, it sounded like a really cool toy, this tractor, sort of like electric tractor sort of thing that will remotely be able to help them clean up after hurricanes, as well as being able to use some of their electric vehicles as a supply for electricity, for shelters, if the power goes out. So, there's just all kinds of cool new things out there now. You know, and it's going to save us in a lot of ways. So, I really appreciate you guys going forward with this.
Thank you so much. All right, looking at the staff report here, we have a few different options. So, I don't know if anyone wants to weigh in on which of the three options they're inclined to go with, or if any of them. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Second time. All right, third strike, you're out.
You've got, you've got big shoes to fill. We've had some wonderful-
Size 13.
We've had wonderful female chairwomen up here. So, I'm inclined for option number one. I appreciate whoever added the sunshine, or the sunset in this. But I'm going to go with anyone else. I certainly want to thank the folks in my staff that helped draft this resolution. And one of my issues with this was, I was not willing to put another board, advisory board, had we not cut some. And this board did take some action, cutting not as many as I'd hoped, but at least, at least a few. So, if we did go, my inclination would be for option one, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. And Ms. Bentley, I can second this, Chair. Can I not?
Yes.
Okay, if you want me to consider that a motion, I'm happy to second it.
I'd like to wait to hear what other, where other people are in this one.
Yeah, I was going to say, no more lights. So, I don't know that you're going to get much in the way of commentary. Yeah, looks like that's the last word. Would you like to make a motion at this point? I just, I don't see anyone else commenting?
No.
I make a motion to approve it with option number one.
All right. Commissioner Pritchett, move for option one. Do we have a second? I'll second it. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously with option one. All right, thank you all for coming out. Moving right along, J1, we do have a card on this. I'm going to ask staff if they'd be so kind as to introduce it.
Commissioners, this is the annual appointment of North Brevard Hospital District Board members. We did advertise and received the two nominees for appointment that you have before you.
All right, we have one card. George McCarion from Titusville. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. I appreciate the welcome.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am George McCarion, 3640 Foxwood Drive in Titusville, here representing the North Brevard County Hospital District. And per our enabling legislation, you're involved in the appointments of certain members of the Board of Directors. We happen to have two members up for reappointment before you, Dr. Elizabeth Galfo and Mr. Jerry Knoffel, for your, hopefully, approval to have them reappointed to the board. And I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions? Oh, it didn't take it, but let's go with that. Commissioner Pritchett?
Dr. McCarion, I want to thank you for all you do. I think it's marvelous that we have a not-for-profit hospital that is doing so well. There's not a lot left in the country. And your management is just wonderful. You've done a great job with that hospital.
Appreciate that.
So, it would be my honor to go ahead and make a recommendation that we put Dr. Galfo on and Mr. Knoffel on.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Isnardi, excuse me, from Commissioner Pritchett, and a second from Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right, next up on the docket, we have got J2. So, again, with respect to this, since this isn't quasi-judicial, if someone wants to make a motion at any point in time, I'm happy to entertain it. Otherwise, I'm happy to have staff introduce it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Isnardi. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, J3. And I've got to ask, what are the actual signature plates? Because I saw this last year, and now that I'm seeing this a second time, I'm just curious. I don't know if staff wants to weigh in on that. I don't know if there was something that someone was whittling in a piece of wood, or what we're really talking about.
They're the plates that are used to sign the checks.
Are they, we're talking a piece of- Are they, we're talking a piece of metal, or?
I believe they're actual plates used for the printing.
Paychecks and stuff.
All right, that'll work. I was just curious. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Abate. Do we have a motion?
Some of.
All right, Commissioner Smith made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pritchett, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We don't have any further public comments, so moving on to board reports. Mr. Abate?
No report.
Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
I've got a relatively short one here. So I've already given a copy of this to the clerk earlier in the meeting. If you'd pass that down, if you'd be so kind as to pass those down. We may have an extra one or two. So when I'm passing out at this point, I put together the board, is that cue for me to finish my board report?
I think so.
I passed out the board assignments as far as committee liaisons. There are two that require a board vote. The first one is the Value Adjustment Board. My recommendation would be to keep Commissioner Pritchett and Commissioner Tabia on that. And then the other one that requires a vote is the Election Canvassing Board. You'll notice on the bottom, and this will be included in the minutes, that I'm statutorily prohibited from serving on that. Commissioner Isnardi is as well, and Commissioner Pritchett is as well. And if Commissioner Tabia ends up with opposition in his election, he'll be statutorily prohibited as well. So at this point, the only two that we could appoint as primary and alternate are D3 and D4. The only question is in what order we're going to appoint. I would think it would be wisest to appoint Commissioner Smith as the primary, simply because he's not in the election being canvassed, understanding that Commissioner Tabia may end up with opposition or may not. I think it's safer to leave him as the alternate. But on those two, we're going to need, can we do a combined motion, Ms. Bentley? Need either a combined motion, or if we need to separate it, we need to separate it. But I need that in the form of a motion, and then the rest of them, I believe, are just chair's preference. I tried to put folks in positions that I thought they'd want. I think you'll find that there's a lot of overlap from what we had this past year, but I think everyone's going to have something, or several somethings that they're pleased with. So if we could have a motion with respect to either or both of those boards.
I make a motion to put Commissioner Smith on the canvassing board and to put myself on the VAB board.
Okay, with respect to an alternate, is there an alternate contemplated in that motion for the canvassing board?
Yes, I'm sorry, with Commissioner Tabia as the alternate in the VAB board.
And then on the VAB, since we need two appointments, would you also contemplate in your motion having Commissioner Tabia as well on that?
Yes, sir.
All right, perfect. I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Okay, that's the extent of my board report. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple.
Yes, sir.
We haven't done this, or something like this, before, but I certainly wanted to get board direction as we move forward, or if we do move forward. A flagpole has been erected in Melbourne Beach at the Ponce de León Park that is causing much confusion and consternation amongst my residents. The design for this work was approved by a previous board in 2006 before the recession, which is why the flagpole was only now erected. To be clear, staff's decision approving the expense of the parts are consistent with the board intended design, and any flaws in this should not be placed on their shoulders. The current design has a Spanish flag with a Puerto Rican flag and a flag flying below it. Several people have expressed outrage over these choices. Making matters worse, research since the board approved the design, which I will pass out here, clearly shows that the odds of Ponce de León landing in Florida at the Melbourne Beach are, quote, "extremely unlikely." I will again pass this out. As such, it is my request to the board that arrangements be changed. In place of the Spanish flag, I believe it'd be more appropriate to fly the Florida flag. Beneath that, a flag of Brevard County Seal would be more appropriate, considering that it's a county park paid for by county dollars along with a POW and an MIA flag. So I don't know if you wanted to think about this for our next meeting, and I certainly would be more than willing to wait, but I just wanted to point out that this is something that is happening in the district in which I represent, but I think probably impacts everyone. So just give you a heads up
Yes, sir.
For the next one. And Mr. Chair, first of all, I'd like to point out the great work that staff has done when it comes to initiative that I've been looking at for quite some time, and that would be that of short-term rentals. So I want to let the board know that I'm proposing some amendments to our code in the coming months regarding short-term rentals. Currently, our code is highly convoluted. After my office did some research surrounding Airbnb-like rentals, I was amazed that even Planning and Development, which is made up of highly competitive or competent individuals, well, who take many calls on the issue, had some trouble figuring out which zoning classifications they are allowed in and under what specific circumstances. It took hours and hours of work to keep up with spreadsheets on where Airbnbs would and would not be allowed. This is convoluted, sometimes nonsensical approach is leading to a significant loss in TDT revenue, as well as unnecessarily restricting individuals' property rights. Unfortunately, the state has preempted us from making a simple edit to our code to fix it. County Attorney's Office has concluded the only way we can make these changes to our code is create new use, which we could apply to a myriad zoning classifications. This is a very complicated issue, so I respectfully request that other Commissioners speak with Planning and Development and the County Attorney's Office, so you might be better understand why it is necessary to approach it this way if you decide to make said changes. I have, again, Planning has done an absolute fabulous job in the various zoning classifications on where it is allowed, where it is allowed with conditions. While this document is extremely complicated, it is less complicated than what we had before. So I'm thinking about potentially bringing this up again in January or February, but I had a constituent with a law degree call my office confused as to whether or not he could put an Airbnb one place or another, and it took me a while to figure out, and I couldn't. So I had to call staff, and it took staff a while to do this. So when you have competent, intelligent individuals that have trouble deciding where it is allowed, maybe, A, we need to clean up the language a little bit, put it on one, maybe one webpage where an average citizen can figure it out, and then, again, look at whether or not we want to expand this usage. This is a great first start, and one that I hope all your offices look at, and we can intelligently, thoughtfully, make a decision whether to expand it or to clean it up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. I see a light from Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask Commissioner Tabia, now, the flags down at the park that you were mentioning before, it's the American flag, the Spanish flag, and then the Puerto Rican flag. Is that what you said?
Yes. I meant to put a picture up, but if you watch Channel 13 News every morning, they take the time and weather. Yes, the Spanish flag is at the same height as the American flag, and we have the, and listen, I said the exact same thing, and so did a number of constituents, and according to
So they have two separate flag poles?
It's like a, it's a weird shape.
An armed?
It's supposed to look like a mast, and it is done correctly. According to Federal Flag Code, it is done correctly. But just because it's done correctly doesn't necessarily mean it is aesthetically pleasing. There are a whole bunch of issues out, what happens when the American flag is flown at half-mast. What's the policy, you know, it comes there. And then, plus, I'll pass out a, again, this was made in 2006, long before any of us got here. There is some research done by Samuel Turner, that PhD at UCF, that points out that the very data that we use to determine that Ponce de León landed there is inaccurate. In fact, I've highlighted here where he specifically says, Ponce de León did not land at this location. So anyway, that's a separate issue. There may be a different direction to go in that as we move forward, but I certainly would like board direction, because this puts staff in a, I don't want to put staff in a tough position as far as giving directive from one Commissioner and not having that from the board. But as I said at the beginning, and will say again, staff followed the, thank you so much.
With the big hand there. What is that?
It's unique.
Why did they put those up in the first place?
Because the board gave direction to staff. We watched it. Staff followed 100% on direction of the board in 2006. So this is something that I would have greatly disagreed with, but, you know, I wasn't following meetings in 2006. So
You may not have even been out of diapers yet.
Well, who says I am now?
I was gonna say that, but.
I'm not going there.
TMI.
So, yeah, if you could, if you have other opinions, my goal was not to take anything down. We could leave the, you know, the polls and do it as diminutive of a cost as possible. But whatever thoughts you had, I certainly would, you know, like your input for our next meeting.
Yeah, I would like to think about this, but I don't know that I've ever seen a display of flags like that. That's
It's peculiar.
It's a mess.
It's different than anything I've ever seen. And I'm a flag guy. I love flags.
Commissioner Isnardi?
This wasn't related to that issue, so I didn't know what I'm going to wait to talk about.
If you have other suggestions, I just threw, you know, the Brevard County flag, the POW. If you have other suggestions, by all means, please bring those. Those are the first ones.
I've never been there, so I guess this is a good reason for me to go there and take a look for myself.
It's a beautiful part of the district I represent, but there's quite a bit of other stuff that probably doesn't belong there at that part.
Maybe, and again, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just making a suggestion, maybe put it on consent and see if we get public comment, or if it gets pulled by one of the Commissioners for the coming meeting.
I, yes, that sounds good. I'm more than willing to do that. I certainly want input from other folks. Again, I don't, this is mainly to put staff in a position that they don't hear from other Commissioners as to, you know, me doing something that would impact, you know, other folks. I definitely don't want to do that. While I represent this park, the funding obviously comes from, part of it comes from general fund.
I think pretty much everyone up here shares your values. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I, thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner Tabia. I love the things you bring forward. Quick thing, though, I think we need to be careful what we put on consent as Commissioners. The County Manager's been able to enjoy throwing so much on consent and have it go through, but I think things that we discuss as Commissioners probably should be discussion areas. And Commissioner Tabia, I want to thank you for always bringing things up early before we do, probably because I make you wait so I can research things later. You've been very good about that, but thank you for that. But I do want to just give a caution to what we do through one consent from us, so.
Okay, understood.
And I would just defer, I mean, this is another district issue, you know, for the Commissioner. So I'm willing to look at options as well. Regarding the short-term rentals, Commissioner Tabia, our office has actually been looking into this as well, not because anybody contacted us, but because of actual complaints from residents and Airbnbs in neighborhoods they shouldn't be in. And a simple search on any Airbnb site can show you the thousands upon thousands of rentals that, again, aren't collecting the tax. You know, regulation is probably a debatable issue, and I realize the state, but Senator Mayfield tried to move a bill at one time that didn't get a lot of traction, but she's done quite a bit of research on this. So, I mean, her office provided some really good stuff on it. If you want to reach out to her, I mean, just to look at some of her ideas perhaps, or let her bounce some things off, you maybe could just give her a call.
And I, Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir, please.
For transparency and ease of use, I'm sure many of these folks that are either unaware of whether or not they have to pay in the tourist development tax, but more importantly, knowing whether or not they're legally doing it, I think, not that it's an excuse not to call up, but when we can boil it down to a one page with, you know, 10 columns and 14 lines under certain, it's a complicated mess. If we can just clean it up a little bit, I think we would find, you know, I'd hope we'd find a little bit more compliance.
Yeah, because I believe there was, there's like no legal recourse. Like, we asked that, you know, them to try to collect it, yet there's not a whole lot we can do. So, yeah, I'm glad you're taking the lead on this, because I'm sure I'll have some input as well.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, sir. Besides Airbnb, you also have VRBO and HomeAway. So those are the three main groups that do these rentals. Okay, board reports. I just want to thank all of our staff and my fellow Commissioners for their support in our fight against breast cancer, and last month, and raising awareness of prostate cancer this month, and my special thanks to the folks up here that have donated to those, and our staff members that have donated, and the guys that have taken the time and put up with the aggravation of growing a beard to support this. So I just wanted to thank all of you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Isnardi?
Yes. I just, and I'm sure the boards will be okay if I bring forward when Commissioner Anderson's family is ready. I'd like to present a resolution, obviously, to him, to honor him, and if they'd prefer, we just present the resolution. But I'd also like to take it a step further, if possible, and have staff or my, working with my office, look at something that we can do in honor of Commissioner Anderson, whether it be, you know, renaming a park.
That's great.
I mean, I've had, I've had people calling, asking that the Parkway should be renamed and Henderson Parkway, because that man, he said, if you do anything, as far as, you know, his legacy went, was make sure they don't screw up the Parkway, not meaning staff, not meaning, you know, anybody in particular, but he's like, that was his passion, because he wanted to have people to have an access out of the county if, God forbid, there'd be a massive hurricane. So I know how passionate he was about that. I don't know if, I know it's a big one. I know it's a big deal to do something that extreme, but, I mean, I think, you know, and it's sort of sad that we do this after people pass, because, you know, they don't get the glory or the, or be able to see their work and see their name and their family, you know, sees it after they're gone. But I think that this would be a great legacy in honor of him and the hard work and many years he put into this. He started on this, making this his mission when he was on City Council in Palm Bay. Those discussions happened. So this probably wouldn't be in existence if it wasn't for his persistence.
I agree. I worked with him for two years on this board, and roads were his passion, but the Heritage Parkway was, and so when you mentioned that, that's immediately what popped into my head.
I've had a few people suggest it, and I don't know how amicable the board will be, how much of a logistics thing that is.
Something certainly to think about.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I think it's a wonderful idea. I think there's been specific people that have done great things in this county, and I think it's a wonderful way to honor somebody. And I wish we would have done this before he passed. I'm with you on that, but I think it's wonderful. Totally support that.
And in keeping with what you had mentioned about doing something for people while they're alive, I'd like to suggest that we contemplate naming the flagpoles in DeSoto Park for the Tabia flagpoles.
I agree. I'll second that any day of the week. I think we should have a little plaque, or maybe a statue.
That's great.
All right, unless anyone has anything else. I'm about ready to adjourn. Anything else?
Yes, we're going to be doing our elves for elders. By the end of the week, we'll get out, you know, drop off details, all that good stuff. And that's, if everybody here remembers, I'm sure staff does, because you guys are the biggest contributors, is where we, our office essentially adopts elderly wards of the state. So these people don't have families, they don't have anyone to think of them at the holidays, and it's really sad when you think about somebody that's lived their whole life and committed their whole lives to not have anybody to celebrate the holidays with, let alone receive gifts and things from. So all support, of course, is always welcome. So that'll be available at the end of the week. And that's it.
All right, perfect. According to Time.gov, we're adjourned at 10:06. Thank you.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.